Because of overdevelopment. I think that this is actually something that we really need to consider because most, there are a lot of studies out there that show that real economic drivers are redevelopment, not new development, that jobs and consistent ongoing jobs for people who are in the construction industry, ways in which to drive assessed values for homes is actually done so much more effectively with redevelopment and scarcity of properties and scarcity of resources. And it's not just the 2008 crash that's causing our property values to be suppressed. It's this general, you know, I don't want to call it like white flight, but there is a certain aspect of that going on, and I think it's really important for us to maintain all of the different areas within the town, and I think we have to think about this in the bigger context of what's going on. So I asked for the map. The traffic study doesn't mention the Pasca One Way Tunnel, which somebody else raised that's less than a mile south, which is one way, and it's a big problem. The traffic study is again based upon incorrect underlying assumptions about the size of the population and the units. This was something that we raised in a previous development discussion. And it's really important to make sure that the underlying assumptions for all of these various expert studies are actually related to the kinds of population densities and implementations that we have here in Ramapo. I saw in John Lang's document that building distances are going to be about 25 feet apart. Probably not sufficient. If the buildings are going to be three stories high, then you're going to need like building spaces more like 36 feet apart. There's always the concern if you start having taller multifamily dwellings of the need and the impacts on the fire department and the access roads. And it really changes the way things look. Maybe one of the things that needs to be considered is a new MR-12 with building height limitation, because when you look at some of the, you know, smaller, like, you know, we have here, you've got Stonegate communities that are multifamily, you've got, you know, various, the Knowles and things like that. And one of the things that really makes them blend into the surroundings a lot better and make it a lot easier to sort of mix them with the surrounding area is the fact that all of the roofs are just smaller, that the overall volume of the homes are smaller. And while we're looking at all of these documents that show a lot of footprints, you know, we're not really looking at visual impacts, which should be part of an environmental assessment, and fire safety impacts other than, you know, this being, let's see. What makes this zone better? Okay, so I had asked a question about what makes this different than other spaces in the area, what happened to the open zone space recommendation. I'm wondering who's collecting the minutes? When will the minutes of the last public hearing and this public hearing be available for review? Who's compiling a list of the questions asked? Who will be replying to the list of questions? Will it be John? Will it be Leonard Jackson? Will it be, you know, will we have adequate time to review the answers that are, you know, that are presented? When you do fill the file out, like I already asked, could you please pull in all of the maps and such which were the basis for the preliminary JD? It's my understanding that in 2015, I was told by an environmental attorney that ACO is actually planning to expand their protection of wetlands to include a 50-foot buffer around the wetlands. I'm hoping your municipal, maybe you've heard more about this, I can try and get you some more information, but I want to know if that's been taken into consideration. Does that particular review only cover the Muncie lumber part, or does it do Collinshaw, or is it the entire zone area? What about the loss of trees? If I'm extrapolating correctly, you had 28.5 acres, less there was acreage for the utility easement, which I think was about three and a half, so that means about 25 acres or so, which are documented as densely covered acres are going to be cleared for this, which translates to a net loss of around 5,000 to 6,000 mature trees. I know some people have commented on the buffers that these trees provide. Obviously, if it were to be built out according to the current subdivision that was already approved for Muncie lumber, the expectation would be that there would be small clearings when you plop down these single-family homes within those cleared spaces, and there would be less of an impact, so that's an important thing to consider. I requested a copy of this document, John Lang's document, in original PDF format. I did it my FOEL request, and then I had to follow up with your office. I explained that printing and scanning causes there, it causes these documents to actually be, you know, less unusable. And I think it's really imperative that the public be delivered the highest quality documents, especially when it's at no cost to the town, to deliver these things in the original PDF format that they were given to you in. Obviously, there are graphics that are included in the document, which presumably exist in larger separate file forms, which probably make for even better viewing, and it would probably be free, you know, for you to actually include those to the public in individual PDF formats so that people could actually look at it and not go blind or simply be unable to see it even with a micro, you know, like magnifying glass. The, I said the maps included in the comprehensive plan document don't look like the full maps in the project folders, which is good. I'm happy to see this, these changes. But what are we actually evaluating? Because things are changing, so we're foiling documents, you're getting answers, people are getting confused. You guys don't want to answer questions in the context of the meeting as to where we are with these plans, what is being concerned? And I think that the point that Ms. Burgess brought up was really important, that it's really important when we consider these things to really think not just about changing the zones, but to really think about what kind of restrictions would be associated with any contemplation. You know, what would keep this within the realm of good planning or sustainability? I talked about the impacts on the water supply and demand. I didn't see any, I mean, United Water is going to give you a willingness to serve no matter what, they just do it, they claim that that's their responsibility, and they're going to do it no matter what. So I know they're going to do that, but the question is, there's always a caveat, and at this point, nobody really knows what that caveat means. So I think it's really important that we do think about where all the various applications are across the board, across the town of Ramapo, for all the subdivisions, for all the new developments being contemplated within the existing zoning before we start considering this one. And I made the comment about redevelopment being a better generator. In the bulk table calculations that were considered, I see some problems, and I'll take that up in writing since we have some time, but I don't believe that those are complete, and I think that we're going to have to pay attention to some of that. And I want to make a final comment related to the turnout tonight and my past request that we put these really important public hearings on the website, on the homepage, and the status. I was actually getting phone calls, I don't know if this was brought up by anybody else. I got three phone calls, or two phone calls and an email, that there were people walking around the surrounding neighborhood telling people that tonight's meeting was canceled because of the weather. I think you guys in the town got some phone calls to confirm that it was still on. And I said, of course, that's silly, you know, people should come out, you know, you guys are not going to cancel it, and besides, it's not bad weather. But what I really would love to say to them is just look at the homepage. If this, you know, it's going to be there, the status should be there. I keep on telling you guys, don't hide this stuff, it's important, we want to be transparent. You know, make it easier for us. This is a free, the website's free, you guys own it. It's just not that hard to do it, and I would really implore you to take advantage of these free communications that the town of Ramapo has. And the last thing I want to say is there are comments that are being made in these documents, you know, that are sort of meant to justify that this is going to be this big kind of area cleanup. And to be quite honest, I'm looking at these pictures that are, well, these are the rundown pictures, these are, well, look at all these terrible rundown, look at the rundown street. And I'm looking, I'm going, that's pretty darn beautiful. That's pretty darn representative of the town of Ramapo. You know, you got some streets that maybe still don't have some asphalt or driveways without asphalt, some older single-family homes, maybe somebody should have been painting. Do we have a problem? I mean, are there people not paying their taxes? Are there homes that are condemned in this particular area? I did not get that impression. I didn't see like real analysis of what is this blight, because I drove around the area and I did not see, I didn't see blight. I saw a really nice community tucked in along a river resource with riparian buffers that obviously was going to have some development, and I see a developer who could have built it out according to some pretty decent approvals that you guys gave him a few years ago, and we could have had a lot more taxes had that been done years ago. And I think people would be a lot, a lot happier, and a lot, there'd be a lot less confrontation. And I keep telling, I'm all for less confrontation. I think we all have to do what we need to do to, you know, make space for everyone in this town, but we got to do it right, and we got to do it without confrontation, and we got to do it in an organized fashion that is just easily accessible to the public. That's how the town of Ramapo is going to be great again. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Come right up.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Supervisor, members of the board. My name is Amelia White. I'm, I live at 10 Garden Place, Spring Valley, New York. I'm a Spring Valley Village trustee, but tonight I'm here as a resident from Spring Valley and a taxpayer. I, I've heard many people say that this project is necessary because there are many people who are in needs of homes. I agree that people do need homes, but the people, as I've heard today and many other times, the people who already live in these current, in their current homes, need to be protected too. And the neighbors, the neighboring areas need to have their rights. If, if we have to make sure that people get homes, they have a place to live, and we're not worried about the people who spent their money and took time to look for a place that was suitable for them and their families, then how are we representing our constituents? I think Spring Valley is similar to this board, the board of Ramapo, because in the past, I got elected in November of last year, so I'm new to the board, but in the past, Spring Valley had been the yes board, I call, and this board is also the yes board. Everything is yes, yes, no questions asked. This year, I was, the shoe was in the other foot, because usually I'm in the audience saying, please, my house is being destroyed because the neighbor's renting, because somebody bought the house next to me and the neighbor's renting, but the neighbor doesn't live there, and I have ugly fence that's, that was put up, and people, they park 10, 12 cars on the grass. And then when I called the village, the court enforcer told the people put gravel on it and it'd be okay. So I get no rights. So this year, I was able, I listened to the people, because my biggest, one of my biggest concerns was every time I went before the board, the Spring Valley Board, I think the only person that paid attention and looked at me is then trustee Anthony Leon, he's the deputy mayor, he's here now today. But we're not here as representing the board, as I said, because we haven't discussed this project, we haven't talked about it, so I'm here as myself. So that's the only person who looked at me and showed some concern. So I feel that it's my job to pay attention to the people, and I, I'm there to represent everybody, but I have to listen to the people that are, that have concerns. I don't, I haven't heard here that anybody that live around the proposed areas who says, yes, I want this project. If there is anybody that spoke before me I didn't see, I would like to ask them why they want that project, because this is, definitely this project would, I think would, I have to choose my words carefully. This project, if it were to be approved, would destroy, thank you, would destroy the East Ramapo Central School District. As it is, I, right now, so much has been taken away from the students, and it would really, that would be a green light to just destroy the whole district. And I think, I think, I really think you should really, really listen to the people, because you want new people, but you have people that chose their place, their places to live, because this is where, it's like a bird looking for a tree, the best tree, they got the best tree, and then now, we don't want any bulldozers to come and take the tree down. So we really, really would like for you to pay attention to everyone and look at, open your eyes and look at the plan and make a decision that you can go to bed and sleep without wondering, oh my God, what have I done? Did I do something to hurt others? Because you, you can't help one group and destroy another. Thank you.
Is anyone else who would like to speak, just raise your hand. Come right up.
Good evening. My name is Emil Ramos, and I live at 8 Witherspoon Drive, which is right across the property along Pasca Road. We are the first street from Mirror Lake, so we essentially will have the biggest impact if the property, if the project is approved. All my concerns have been raised during this meeting, and I just want to say to the town board and to the supervisor that I've lived in this area since 1977, and that house was our first house, and it still is. And we're pretty happy where we are, we haven't moved, we love it here, and because of the concerns that have been raised, please, I implore you, disapprove this project and don't hurt us. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who would like to speak this time?
Well, Mr. Supervisor, Mr. Lang has provided to the board his recommendation for EF Part Two. The board could either consider that tonight, or since we're missing two of our board members, the board could decide to delay further consideration of that until the other board members are present. I believe the other board members would have to look at a video or the transcript of today's proceeding before they vote on that, but those are, I believe, the choices that you have this evening.
Well, I think that the, the board would want to make sure that we have the, the Part Two and to have that, that those informations gathered that Mr. Lang spoke about in the first part. So why don't we schedule to do the supplemental on our meeting on the 18th? And why don't we adjourn this meeting, this public hearing, until our first meeting in January? And I'll ask our town clerk to give me that date. Do you have that date, Chris?
The second Wednesday in January is the 14th.
Okay, so we will continue this?
Yes. Yeah, I've just, we, we have yet to schedule the reorganization meeting as well. Some day, some years we do that before the first regularly scheduled meeting, some years we do it on the same night as that meeting. If we're going to schedule this as a continued public hearing, the board should just decide if we want the reorg meeting on the same night as the continued public hearing or not, just because we want to give everybody an opportunity to participate, and that's usually a long agenda.
It is. So why don't we have an extra meeting in January? I agree with you, the reorg meeting is a lengthy meeting. So why don't we have this public hearing on the 14th, and we'll have a meeting on January 7th, the Wednesday before, and we'll have that as our reorg meeting. All right? So later, when we do our agenda, we will set those dates and then vote on those dates. So we will delay the, the vote on the
EF Part Two.
The EF Part Two until the 18th of December, and when all five members of the board will be here. And the, we will not take any actions, and we will have, reconvene the public hearing on January 14th. Okay?
Motion?
Motion to adjourn until January 14th. Moved by Councilman Charles, seconded by Councilman Friedman. All those in favor say aye. Post, Carrie, you have a speak. We'll let everybody, if you want to continue to talk with each other, please do it in the hallway so we can continue with the rest of the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
You ready?
Whenever you're ready.
Okay. All right, we're back on with our meeting and we're going to take things out of order here. Okay, we're going to take things out of order because I know people have been waiting for public participation, so we'll do that right now. So we will take on public participation. Who would like to speak? Well, I think we're going to let Mr. Schutie come up first.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. And I would like to wish everyone here a Merry Christmas and a Happy Hanukkah.
State your name and address, please.
Sure. It is Roy Chudie, 16 Lonigan Drive in Suffolk.
Thank you.
Before I speak about what I wanted to speak, I'd like to address something else after attending this meeting tonight. Whether one agrees or disagrees with a person or a statement, that individual should do so with a little respect and without vitriol. I was embarrassed tonight to listen to some of this. You can make a point without being mean or nasty. We're all God's children. Nobody has to speak like that without respect. I think that's terrible. And I'm going to say something else. If anybody noticed, they were children. They were students here today. So Civics 101 went out the window. That was terrible. That was a terrible example to set. There was even an individual sitting here giving high fives to people who were doing this vitriol. That's terrible. There's no decorum, there's no respect shown, and there's no self-respect. And that's now how business should be ever conducted. People who want to run for office, then you run for office. And if you are elected to that office, you would deserve the same respect. You treat others like you want to be treated. You can agree to disagree. And I'm going to tell you, that was embarrassing to me. And as a Vietnam veteran, which I am proud to say, I have faced the enemy. And I know what an enemy looks like. This is not an enemy. This is something that you can still discuss and try and make your point without the vitriol. It was terrible. And I found it embarrassing, high-fiving, and I thought it was disgraceful to be truthful. Onto what I wish to talk about, which is a very serious problem. It's been an ongoing problem. And I know it's also well-known to everybody here. And that is, I want to address the flooding issue that's especially hit hard to Squires Gate area and the surrounding areas. On March 7, 2011, Supervisor St. Lawrence did come to the village of Suffolk and he addressed a host of issues. And speaking of which, was the Suffolk Quarry, and he spoke about, that was gifted to the town in December of '06. In part of the statements, it was also, we would talk, the supervisor spoke about the siphoning plan that was designed by Booker engineers, that both the town and the village, their main goal is flood mitigation. Now Quarry Ridge was going to pay for the siphon and the park that they would donate if this was done, but it would be based on the approval to build and develop in that area. So a contract of sale with Quarry Ridge, for the sale of the former Tilcon Quarry, which was donated to the town, consisted of approximately 61 acres for future use as residential development, of 440 units, flood mitigation project, and a park. The town board voted to amend and adopt in July 11, 2011 via voice vote, Resolution 2011-438, which was a project revision on Quarry Ridge, which reduced it to 11 acres and the units to be constructed would be reduced to 250. One of the questions I would like to ask is, was the project ever presented to the village in its entirety?
The applicant had meetings, the developer who wanted to do this, who had the rights to do it, went to the village and made presentations, but I don't believe a formal application was ever made. Michael, would you?
Well, I know there were definite meetings with the village board and the planning board. It never moved beyond a certain point, and it's my understanding that the village was not looking favorably upon the development proposal.
But there was no formal development made and it would just dissipate? It just went?
Well, I believe they met with the village board and they met with the planning board. And it's at least my understanding, and again, the town, since it was a, it's a land use issue with the village, the town basically kept its distance and let the village decide how it wanted its own land to be developed. We certainly wanted the project to move forward, and certainly that was a way of funding the siphon project, which we had designed by Booker engineering as part of that process. But it was my understanding from conversations with the developer that it was not being looked favorably upon by the village and therefore didn't proceed.
But I will say this, we have an application. I know that the village received about $3 million for flood and what they want to do with that. That's in their court. But we have an application in to the DEC through FEMA that is really right on top of the pile. We're checking it and pushing it all the time, and we hope to hear from that. And we will be using that money to put in the siphons and to do the project.
We had requested about $5 million. And it's our understanding that there was supposed to be a decision on that after the beginning of November, but we're still waiting.
I'm going to be in Albany tomorrow because the governor's going to be announcing the regional council winners for the 10 regions in the state, and I will be talking about where our application is on this, because it is somewhat folded into that, because we're dealing with a lot of the same agencies. And we did get the DEC to back us on this with the federal government. So, you know, we also had other monies that we had received at one time from Congressman Angle, about $170,000. And then when the Mississippi River went into their situation where the drought, all the money was taken away from all the projects and put into that project. So we lost that. We've spoken to Congresswoman Nita Lowey about helping us push on that as well. But we're very confident that, very hopeful, and with a high confidence, that we were going to be able to get that $5 million, which is separate from the $3 million that is going to the village.
I am, I have been on top of this. I'm pretty much versed on this.
I know you are, and I appreciate the work that you guys have been doing as well.
Yeah, well, thank you. But, you know, what I want to say to address that $5 million, that was in June of '13. That was, the application went in, and I've even contacted the head of OEM, Richard Lord, and all I get is, "Well, there's a lot of applications out there." And then I've did some research and they say you're on step six. Well, you know, step six is great if there's six steps. But if it's step six of 100, I mean, they don't tell me. So it's very clandestine. You know, they don't want anybody to know. So, you know, if it's...
I will tell you, Roy, it is a chutes and ladders type of, like, it's all chutes and ladder board.
Right.
And we have completed a very good portion of that. We feel very confident that we are in the pile that is going to be worked upon.
Well, I have seen a lot of that paperwork.
And one last thing, also, just this week, we've been down, we are going to put in a tremendous amount of money, even though it's not in the town of Ramapo, right there in the Mawwa River, right across from Avon, going in toward the quarry, that erosion that took place on the east side of the Mawwa there. And we're going to be going in there and cleaning that up. And I think it's a project of about $380,000. Michael, I think that's about what it is.
Yeah, that's correct. It's reestablishing the bank.
And we're paying for that.
Well, I'm sure you know.
And we're paying for it. We hope that we'll be reimbursed by FEMA, but we're laying the money out from that. Then we will go after them for that. But we did get an approval to go forward with that project, but we're putting the funds up and doing that. You know, I'm not saying that that's going to change the flow. It's not going to do what the siphons do, but it is just upstream from Squires Gate there.
I've seen the Booker engineer, I've seen many of his dialogue, and, you know, I think it's great. Right now, we sit there, people who are actually, their homes in foreclosure, people are walking away from their homes. And the moral impact, the personal impact, to see an individual, a parent, actually cry in front of their children when you've lost half your house is something that shouldn't be. And, you know, even we've had, I've spoken with Vince Altieri from the drainage, and to be truthful, and I kind of scolded him, because he says it's our fault. You shouldn't have known, you shouldn't have bought in a flood area. And that was not accepted too well by the folks that live in this area. I can retort, "Well, you know, you can't buy what shouldn't have been built," you know, and tit-for-tat and all that, but you're supposed to move forward. You're not supposed to use revisionist history. Nothing gets done. So, you know, and we've been promised and promised and promised in that area, and it's always, all the Army Corps, there are more reasons that nothing is done than gets done. But the $3 million that was given to the village, I can tell you, I was initially a part of that board. I divested myself for personal reasons on that. But I could tell you, none of that $3 million is going to be used for the quarry. Not one penny. Not one penny of that $3 million is going to be used for Squires Gate.
So, well, I would think that would be shameful.
It is shameful. There's no doubt about it. But I attend every meeting, and there's others who have attended meetings who'll tell you that they came in and they managed to speak with the board of folks that are elected onto this, onto their committee, and they're going to be using it for other diverse, you know, projects, smaller projects. So their excuse being that the quarry project is expensive in the fact, five to six million, you're only getting three million, it wouldn't cover it, yada, yada, yada. So they're using it in other areas, which I think is, it's ridiculous. But again, I believe it was led, they were led down that path by the state engineers. Again, I ask, outside of grant money, is there any way that we can have an emissary, if possible, between the town and the village? We have a new board, an elected board in the village, and I speak with them, and they are more than willing to sit and meet with our town elected officials and try and find a way that outside of even grant money, maybe through private enterprise, whatever, that they can come up with some kind of funding that can initiate at least a siphoning plan? If nothing is going to be built there and it's just sitting there, maybe at least just for that, just to help people and to actually save people.
I'll tell you what, Roy, I think that's a good suggestion, and I want you to know too that we did get Tilcon to do an incredible regrading and cleaning up of the site, and we fought hard for that. Why don't we do this, right after the holidays in January, why don't we reach out to you, to your group, and I'll reach out to the village? And why don't we have a little forum here? We can televise it so other people can see it, and we can kind of see if we can all work together. So why don't we do that and set that up for January?
I appreciate that. I would look forward to that. And thank you for that offer, and I'm sure the new trustees and the current mayor would agree to that, too.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Roy. Thank you. And thanks for your patience. Richard, yes. He took here all your...
Much greater.
I know you are.
But he said it in a much more diplomatic and better way. My thing was to come down here and ask you what your, about the flood...
Give me your name and address, please.
Rich Carr, K A R P P, 88 Lonigan Drive.
Thanks.
Right next to the houses that were taken down.
Yep.
What you were doing with the flood mitigation, or lack of what's going on with the flood mitigation, I mean, even today, when the water's getting up, there's people going down there and looking. We've been very lucky so far.
Yep.
We lost four houses, knock on wood, thank the man upstairs, nobody was even hurt, and there's been no death. And especially when those houses went down, everybody's so afraid of the next time. And what Roy said, people have left their houses, have gone someplace else, because they can't take any more flooding. So, but now, I guess you two guys, you answered the question of what's going on.
We'll keep pushing, and in January, we'll get an update as to where we are with the $5 million that we've requested from the state and the federal government.
And there's something else. Maybe you can get in touch with the drainage department or something about the river. On the bank on the other side that goes 20, 30 feet up, that is full of trees, garbage, everything that people throw over. And every time the water gets up, all that stuff comes down, blocks the...
We are going to be stabilizing from the bridge on 59, going north on the east side all the way up to the quarry there, and we're going to be cleaning that up.
Yeah, I'm talking about...
You're talking further up?
Right.
Further down, further down.
Yes, right past my house.
The county did come into their credit one time and cleaned some of that up, but it fills up again.
No, we did that ourselves, Mr. Schutie.
Oh, that's right, it was you guys that did that.
We did it ourselves. We took about 20, 30 truckloads of stuff out. But we had no heavy equipment or anything like that. The people on the other side, all they do is, you can see trees over there, it's a big garbage pit.
You mean the people that live on Riverside?
Right, on Hillside.
On Hillside and Riverside.
We've been after the village to do something. The village says, "If it's your property, you're responsible to keep it clean." My property is, goes into the river, so I keeping back of my house, the same as everybody else, clean. Or do the same thing with the people up there. And like you were talking about the development that's going to be with, I'm not going to say a quiet discussion you had.
Yeah, right.
That's something that sounds like what should have been before they built Squires Gate. A lot of the trees are just hanging on by one or two roots. And every time it rains, more dirt comes off, and it's sooner or later, the trees are going to come down, somebody's going to get hurt.
I want you to know, I was at a meeting before Squires Gate was built, on them getting the ability to build Squires Gate. And I was there with my father, and he was saying, "You can't build this, it's in a flood plain and people will just be flooded out." And that was back in '62, I think it was. And the village decided, no, they're going to build in the flood plain. I think Mayor Rice was the mayor at the time, James Rice. And they built it. But people lived there, and as Mr. Schutie said, and as you've said, and I saw the houses next to you where they knocked right off the foundation and cracked.
I spoke to you that a couple of days afterward.
And it's just, time goes on and we forget about it, and then it's going to happen again. That's, it is going to happen again. It's not a matter of, you know, "Oh, this happened, what a terrible thing that happened." No, it's going to happen again.
Yeah.
And we need to really step up our efforts to make the state and the federal government realize, if they give us this $5 million, we can go ahead and put the siphons in, and whatever else happens on the property, the rest of the property, that's beside the point.
But that's not going to stop the flooding, but it's going to alleviate a lot of it.
But it's going to take people and put them into more of a 25-year flood plain. I think that's what Booker's report said, that 90% of the homes there will go into the 25-year flood plain. So that will be good. Unfortunately, the 25-year flood plain these days, you know, we're in 100 years and we get it every four years.
Forty years, we had four floods.
Yeah. But it does, it will give a certain bit, we don't need to worry about every rain, but I hear you.
Oh, no, it's not going to, nobody expected, nobody does expect it to stop the...
But it can take the top of that flood off.
Instead of getting four, five feet of water, you might get two feet of water.
Yep.
Or in certain times, instead of getting two feet, you might get a couple of inches. That's all people want, a fighting chance.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Supervisor.
You're welcome.
Hi, good evening. Ed Markounis, 2 Willow Drive, Suffolk.
Congratulations.
I thank you.
Or condolences.
Next meeting in another month or so.
That's right, that's right. Our newest trustee in the village of Suffolk.
Yes, thank you. I'm here to support Roy and Rich here in their quest for this $5 million for the siphoning system, due to the fact that they've suffered through these floods, the damages, the loss of, the possible loss of life going forward, that we urge the town of Ramapo to pursue this money and to pursue the siphoning system. If this could, you know, benefit, we have 140 homes down there, is that correct? 140 homes. So there's a huge potential for more damage, as you stated, in the future, possible home damage, loss of life, whatever it is. We need to correct this condition with your help. Hopefully, we can get that money and install a siphoning system.
Great. And I look forward to working with you on this, and we'll start right off the beginning of the year.
Sounds good. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ed. Anybody else? Robert, did you want to speak? Come right up.
Robert Romanowski, 183 Maple Avenue, Muncie. I just want to make a comment, too, about the flooding in Squires Gate. As I understand, it cost $5 million to do this project, to put the siphons in and everything. Why doesn't the town just pay and have this done right now to get it done with, so that, no, isn't people's property, lives, and their possessions important? I don't see why the town couldn't do this. You spent $38 million in taxpayer money on the stadium. Is that more important than people's property and lives and their possessions and what's going on in Squires Gate, or having people crying in front of their children? I really think, you should really think about your priorities here and the way you do things. Thank you.
Well, I just want you to know, Robert, that we, this town board has made the, taken as a priority as well, that not only putting in the siphon, but we will pay for the ongoing maintenance of it and the energy to run it and the cleaning out on it, and we'll take that responsibility and not put it on the village. And I think that Booker's engineering is very good, and we would preclude ourselves from getting the funding if we did it ourselves. We wouldn't be able to get that funding. And we're, Robert, pretty sure that we're getting close to the top of the pile there, but we will get everybody together and we'll keep banging the appropriate desk in Albany and in Washington. Okay. Yes, sir. And then you're next.
Mr. Supervisor?
Hey, how are you?
Clerk, attorney, members. Frank Hagan, Denery Court, Suffolk.
Welcome, and congratulations to you, too.
Thank you. Maybe I'll make mayor soon.
Maybe.
I'll just keep going. But I would like to back Mr. Schutie's, all his efforts, and I would look forward to talking to you in January also.
Great.
About the siphoning system and anything else the town can do for the village. It's reciprocal, they'll do the same thing for you.
Absolutely. Thank you, Frank. Thank you.
I would just reiterate Bob Romanowski's comments about, you know, what has taken so long? And he told us you were at a meeting when you were a child with your father about this issue, and you knew that this issue existed before you became supervisor. And what has taken so long? I mean, we spent, I'm sure it's $32, it's been $72 million on the stadium, and you fast-tracked that, cut through all the red tape, and you made that happen. I'm surprised that this hasn't, something has not been done on this a long time ago. And if you're finally going to meet with them and get it done, well, that's great, but it should have happened a long time ago. Thank you.
Anybody else who would like to speak? Come right up.
Sam Gennarone, 73 East Maple, Suffolk. I was thrilled to see progress at the entrance to the quarry north of Route 59. I saw on the agenda tonight that Conserve Construction was awarded the contract. They did the work on the west bank adjacent to the Avon Truck Entrance. I believe that was funded by FEMA, correct?
Yes.
$300,000.
And now that we've gotten the approval by FEMA, we lay the money out, and then, since they've approved it, then they will reimburse us after we're done.
And what is the value of that contract on the east bank from 59 up to the railroad trestle, I assume?
Yeah. And Michael looked up that... I thought it was 280 or 380, I'm not sure.
I would also like to find out what the change order is.
$416,000.
Four?
$416,000.
$416,000.
The change order, when the project was originally proposed, it was $325,000. In the two years that have ensued since then, there's been further deterioration requiring additional embankment work. So that's the difference.
$416,000. Was that?
So site clearing, there's site clearing involved in that, and there's earthwork, that's about $91,000 alone, and...
Yeah, it's fine.
Yep, it's all laid out here.
Details.
I can give you a copy of this if you want.
That would be great. I would love to have that and distribute that in the village. Thank you, Supervisor. One other question, was there an RPF sent out for this work on the east bank?
Yes, this was done about, right after Sandy, when this went out. Yep.
And...
This was the lowest bid.
Is there a list of contractors in here to bid on the project?
We can get you that, who bid on it.
Because as far as I know, the work on the east bank, I'm sorry, the west bank adjacent to the Avon Truck Entrance was declared an emergency and was awarded to Conserve Construction in a no-bid contract. Am I correct in saying that?
Yes, it may have been exactly the same site for both sides of the river, and the governor allowed that to be done so that it could be done streamlined with FEMA.
So was the work that's going to take place in the next couple of weeks put out to bid, or no?
Well, it was done, I believe, at the exact same time and under the emergency, but I'll check that for you.
Yeah, I don't remember the procurement process, but it followed whatever requirements we had in state law, whether it was an emergency then or it was competitively bid, I don't recall.
Who should I speak to concerning that at a later date?
I guess Mike Riley, our intergovernmental agency person, has been in charge of all of those FEMA projects, so...
Thank you very much for your time.
You're welcome. Okay, anybody else in the public like to speak? Motion to close public participation? Moved by Charles, seconded by Councilman Friedman. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, carried unanimously. Next item on the agenda is adoption of the minutes for the November 12 meeting. Moved by Charles, seconded by Friedman. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, carried unanimously. Item 1A, one...